Yeah, you need to be on. Yeah, I know we've got a big members of the public, my good press. April's on. Okay, friends. Esta hora. Esta hora. Listo? Si, estoy lista. Todos?
Si.
Sí, vamos. Vamos a conversar.
Oh, yeah.
Para la rápida. Hello, San Miguel County. Today is Wednesday, October 22nd. It is 2:00 PM. This is a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I could almost call it an emergency meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. We have convened in order to discuss the discontinuation of SNAP benefits to our local community across all of the community across the country due to the federal shutdown. So we'll get to that shortly. Present are all three commissioners, a number of staff, including our Human Services Director, and a member of the public. Hello. We will now have a moment of silence for grounding and gratitude. Reviewing the agenda. In addition to discussing a pause or a discontinuation of SNAP benefits, we will also be talking about the situation of the food pantry being relocated. Anything else anyone would like to bring up? Adjustments? Are we good? I'm seeing everybody's fine. Okay. Now that we've approved the agenda, reviewed the agenda, we will go on to public comment for items not on the agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes. If comments are not related to an item on the agenda, there will be no board response or action taken since the topic was not posted with proper notice. And any comment could potentially violate the Colorado Open Meetings Law. Sir, would you care to make public comment?
No.
Okay, that's fine. And April, you're the only other member of the public. I see you online, but I know you're here for this SNAP conversation. So let us move on to that. Thank you, April Montgomery from the Telluride Foundation. Linnea, I'm going to let you at least begin this conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. So on October 10th, the federal food nutrition supplement gave notification to all the states that there will be a hold on our November 2025 SNAP benefits across the country. This is because of the current federal government shutdown and it's caused a lapse in the funding. Meaning that in Colorado, that affects about 600,000 Coloradoans. In San Miguel County, it's about 170 households. Over the last week, the Directors of Human Services and the State Department of Human Services has been convening and discussing strategies to support those families that will not be getting those SNAP benefits. At this time, the state is really directing that our community partners, such as our local food pantries, are being talked with and we're directing those SNAP recipient clients to our local food pantries. There's been some conversation about some creative ideas. However, some of the way that the funding is given to the state or given to the counties still is being researched. We have continued, we have already begun telling clients who have called us what that looks like. This is something the state of Colorado and San Miguel County don't have control over. And we are just trying to find a way to, you know, give resources in the community along with just some compassion to our clients that are going to feel a lot of frustration and worry and sadness and they're scared. This is a really important benefit that our office can gives out to people in our community at the, at the local level. We do know that, I heard this morning, that school programs, the lunches and the breakfast that happen at school, those will continue. So that is not something that we see to end. And so that was a positive to hear this morning. However, I do worry about our fixed income seniors in general, just in the level of their income and how many, how much SNAP they get. So we're trying to come up at the director's level with some really creative ideas to help support that. However, really directing people to our food banks and our food pantries is the most important. Food Bank of the Rockies is, they were on a call this morning with the governor. They are, they are ready and able to try to just mass distribute food to all the food pantries across the state. When talking with our local pantry here in Telluride, along with the one in Yarraye, what their need is, how can the community help those that don't have SNAP benefits that are looking to support this, this situation? Really, they talked about donations of money. That being, that being the case, because the buying power of a food bank is so much greater than our buying power in a grocery store. Their ability to get bulk and even some free items is really better for them to be able to order that. So really, it's frustrating for our community, I think, to hear this, but also know that our staff is ready to just have those conversations and try to help get them to the places where they can find that food security while we wait. We do know that when the federal government comes back, those benefits will be distributed. There will be a lag in that distribution of those, just based on how the drawdown happens to get those to people's EBT cards.
Are you suggesting that back funds will be distributed or just that the program will resume?
The program will resume. I don't have a very clear answer right now about if there will be like retroactive. So if it's turned on after the first of November, what, what that looks like, I will get clarification and let the board know. But, but we do anticipate any kind of lag, some lag in getting those re-issued to people's EBT cards.
Do you think there'll be a need to re-register or anything like that? Or it's really just a matter of re-initiating the process?
Yeah. So the, yeah, so the state of Colorado has, has made the choice to continue to process applications and redeterminations normally so that there is no lag on our end. So that those people that apply between now and moving forward, or those redeterminations that are happening as of right now into November, they will continue to be processed. They will continue to be approved if they meet qualifications. However, those payments will be put on hold on the back end through the state until the federal government comes back.
I do have a number of questions. I had read through the documents that CCI provided to the commissioners, which were attached to the agenda, and it indicated that the words I read were "future is uncertain" after the government shutdown ends. But it seemed that you already know that as soon as the government shutdown ends, they will resume the program. That it said it was uncertain, as if they might cut benefits or not That it said it was uncertain, as if they might cut benefits or not continue or resume benefits.
My understanding with, from all the conversations I've had, is that it will resume.
So there's no concern about it being somehow diminished when it does come back?
Not that I have heard.
Okay. That's helpful. And then can you give the, or ask a little more information about those 170 households in San Miguel County? Like, my questions would be, how many people do you think that is? I think our average household size is 2.2, so we could estimate that two, two happen to know.
I don't have an exact number for you, Commissioner. I just know that we have about 170 households.
You know, what, how much cat or what the benefit is that they receive?
Yeah, so I got a number today that the average Colorado household receives about $300 a month. But that can vary. We have some households that receive as little as $24 a month and some households that are receiving over 500, depending on the household size and the income.
That, that's within the county, that range?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And do you have any sense of where, how they're distributed across the county? Like east end versus west end? Just so we can give a heads up to the food bank?
Yeah, I mean, I think my, my guess would be that, that a majority of our SNAP recipients are probably in the west end of the county. Norwood and west would be, would be where the majority, after speaking with Wolf at the food pantry here in Telluride, even in his numbers around, you know, the busyness of the Telluride pantry versus the busyness of the Norwood pantry, would make me make that assumption as well.
Is there any way to find that out, actually?
Um. Possibly.
Without, you know?
Yeah, possibly. I can, I can figure that out in a way.
I mean, if you have a database, you did more raw and asking, you know, go through all 170 households.
Yeah, and we don't do it via region. I mean, it's going to be via address, but we really look at, like, our, our caseloads are looked, we look at our cases through, like, last name. And so I may, I'll have to come back to you on that.
A lot of work. I think you do probably have a sense, but I would just be, I don't know, somewhat helpful, maybe to the food banks.
Agreed.
Well, even without a hard number, I think we can assume that Norwood's going to be the, they're the brunt of the traffic. And that our next conversation with Kalina may help us understand what, if anything, we need to do to scale that up, even temporarily, whether it's more hands on deck or more direct funding.
Okay, I don't know the scale of the two pantries I used to, that I've forgotten that, so. And it's changing. I mean, there's been an influx at the Norwood Food Pantry in the last year. It's, it's not like a linear thing. It's pretty fluid right now.
Commissioner, I have a question about the Norwood pantry. Commissioner Gleason, is our Norwood pantry also serving Westin to Montrose County?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the Norwood Food Pantry does serve Montrose County residents. You know, the Westin Family Link is there. A lot of Westin Montrose County residents go for food assistance, but they also go to the Norwood Food Pantry.
That was my assumption.
And I think we had this conversation when we were talking about the food pantry, actually, like, should we reach out to Montrose County? Is that, I'm thinking about the right place? Where, and we said, well, yeah, but they go kind of cross county lines in both directions. So we weren't going to make that request.
Yeah, exactly. That, that was what we decided because Montrose County directly funds Westin Family Link there. Covering that need in those bases. And there is crossover. There are some San Miguel County residents that get served by Westin Family Link as well.
How, oh, I noticed that the CDHS Colorado Department of Human Services is going to send out a notice to recipients on October 21st, but they also shared a lot of suggestions for local messaging. Have you thought about whether we need to do any of that and how that might work?
Yeah, I've had a small conversation about doing some messaging. I did on our Your Ray County website. We have a banner running, because I was able to have this conversation with the board yesterday. But we do have a banner running on our website. We have posted signs in our office and I have asked us to post them here. And then what they call speed letters, which come out of CBMS, which is our database, were sent to recipients of SNAP, letting them know, along with text messages for those who opted into text messaging, emails, and they were working on possibly some phone calls. There's also a banner on the CDHS website with lots of information to help family direct them to either 211 or the Feeding Colorado website, just for resources. I did see that Tri County Health has also put out kind of a a broad email to service providers in our area with links to local supports.
Can I ask you about your conversations specifically with the Telluride Food Bank, but also curious about Your Ray County? What those, how those conversations?
Yeah.
And what the current plan is, if any, started to develop. I had a meeting with the Norwood Food Pantry the end of last week and I had a brief conversation on this topic. But I wanted to wait till we had this meeting before I followed up with them.
Absolutely. Mine was also fairly brief, specifically with the Your Ray Pantry, speaking with them. They, they were like, yep, we are ready. We understand the influx is coming. We are prepared for it. They did talk a little bit about like fresh produce or any kind of meat being something that they feel like they will lack in providing to families and, and people who come into the food pantry. My conversation with Wolf at the Telluride Food Pantry was that he was, he would be putting in his November order for the food pantry that he would, and maybe, again, we have April on the phone, so she may be able to give a little bit more of that, but that he would be putting in that order. He'll, he'll wait till he puts that final order in to know what he needs to order, but that he would possibly have the chance to increase his order based on, on this change. And felt like that at this time was going to be sufficient, is the conversation I had with him. And, and they both felt like they were ready for any kind of influx that could take place.
Was there any talk about extending operation hours or?
No.
Changes there?
I agree, Commissioner. I think that, that the operation hours, I'm just reading your face, I apologize. I think the operation hours are limited in both pantries that I spoke to, along with the Norwood pantry. And, and I think that just comes down probably to volunteer hours and, and things like that and can be difficult.
See here, it's that currently our food pantry is just operating within such a limited, that, I mean, the Norwood Food Pantry is only open on Fridays from 3:00 to 6:00. And that's, you know, that's the one opportunity that people have to get the move of the week. That's going to be a challenge.
I wonder if we should have a conversation with both the Norwood Food Pantry and the Tard Food Pantry about whether we could help them round up more volunteers? I do feel like this is the kind of event where our community would come together, maybe step up to provide some additional volunteer hours. Do you think that's reasonable or?
I mean, I think that is going to necessitate a conversation with the managers of the pantries and just seeing what that will look like on their end. I mean, I can already speak to the Norwood Food Pantry and their limitations. And, and you know what? I misspoke with the hours of operations. Sometimes they were on Friday, but because of the school operations, they are now operating on Sunday afternoons. And that's kind of the one time that the school has agreed for distribution, so that there's no crossover with school activity. So that is, you know, that's just one upfront hurdle for, for the Norwood pantry is that there can't be operations during this.
Okay, yeah. Do you feel like it's the county's sort of responsibility or role, I should say, to work with the food pantries? Means you think we can be helpful? Or do you think, well, maybe, April can probably fill us in a second. That's my, I'll pull that question. What about additional staffing for your team, Linaya, or ours? Because that's something, again, I read in the CDHS materials that you may expect more questions and things like that.
Yeah, I really think our staffing is mostly, we have somebody in the office every day of the week. And, and really, that probably is adequate staffing to field questions. And then we have all of our workers working all five days of the week, even though their work schedules are a little varied. And, and most of our SNAP recipients know how to reach their case manager. And if not, they're able to call me and I can direct or have that conversation.
I just, I see our role in trying to help provide information to the food pantries as to how much they might need to scale up, because that's kind of the magic number they're trying to try to figure out with Food Bank of the Rockies is how much more food should they order and what should they be planning for? Even if they're not able to extend their operational hours, they, you know, we're anticipating needing more food. And how much is that going, what's that going to look like? And I think that by crunching some numbers, we might be able to help provide some guidance there.
And I'm happy to work on crunching some of those numbers, like Commissioner Brown asked.
I think that's, as I, as I recall, the food pantry's sort of operated number of households as well. So if we could say we have 170, we think, you know, 50 or on the, whatever the number is, that would probably be really helpful for them.
I think the other thing, just to point out for, for the board, is that any EBT or SNAP benefits that's on EBT cards, that they're not going to go away. So if you still have SNAP benefits on your EBT cards, when November 1st rolls around, you can still use those. So, so some of the conversation is like, you know, check your pantries, look at your budget. Is it something that you could hold off spending the last quarter of your October EBT to help you through November? Just some of those conversations. Some people can't. Some people have, you know, the statistics say that about 80% of our households spend their EBT in the first two weeks, their SNAP benefit in the first two weeks. By the last week of the month, about 95% of households are utilizing all of their SNAP benefits. But, but some of that conversation is if you have, like, if you have a chance, you can keep that. And retailers are still being instructed by USDA and by, by the governing bodies of our retailers that they need to continue to take SNAP benefits through EBT, that that is part of their contracting with that by being a SNAP, by being an EBT retailer, they are required to take those. So I did hear that this morning. That will, that will hopefully continue for those people that still have some benefits left on their card. Again, they won't get those new benefits. Benefits are distributed between the first and the 10th of every month. That's how the distribution happens, based on some social, on your last number of your social security number. And so I, I do foresee an influx of people in our office in those first 10 days.
If there are no other questions we could maybe ask to hear from our good friend April Montgomery of the Telluride Foundation.
Hi, everyone and commissioners, and thanks for having this conversation. Maybe I would first ask, is there anything in specific you want to, for me to target my remarks?
You know, you had just sent me an email when we, when we, when I let you know about this meeting and you covered some information about sort of the status of food pantries already being in greater need. So maybe you want to just bring everyone in the room up to speed on what you covered in that email?
Sure. Well, one thing, we are trying to keep our, I guess, fingers on the pulse when it comes to the food pantries. We talk to them quarterly and try to get numbers and just keep tabs on how many people are being served by the food pantries. And when I say that we, in our service area, we are looking at Your Ray, Telluride, Nookla, Norwood. What did I miss? So that's about four. And from at least the Westin and Naterita and, or Nookla and in Norwood, they have been reporting a 30% increase since the beginning of the year. I don't know directly from Telluride, but I'm sure they're experiencing an increase too. Our numbers are saying that right now they're serving, at least Telluride, Westin and Norwood are serving about 2,000 individuals. And so I say that just to start with, that we're already this year seeing a tremendous, it's above COVID numbers. So we know they're already stressed. And with this, they've been, I guess, preparing for the fact that with cuts in Medicaid and other food programs, now SNAP, they're just, I guess, in the position of knowing that these numbers are just going to keep increasing. And then you put on top of that the extra stress that Norwood is experiencing, trying to find a new location. It's, yeah, it's pretty tough. We are at the foundation looking for funding everywhere we can. We, it's interesting, I was just reviewing. We usually often provide annual grants to Angel Baskets, Weston Family Link, and the Hub, who supports the food pantry. And they all are asking for increased amounts this year, which is very understandable. We, in addition to that, we apply for grants ourselves. We just, we have two grants in right now that we're waiting to hear back on that would support both senior meals, the food pantries, and a Totes of Hope program, which is food during the four-day, food on the three-day weekend for Weston and Norwood. So this year, we have decided we are making an extra push to let our donors know. And Colorado Gives, we just changed our message. We're asking for funding for our food security initiative. And the area that we think is very important, and I think that is, that fits very much with SNAP, because with SNAP, they have control. They can go into the grocery store and buy what they want. And we know from a several-year-old now, but a survey from Tri County, that the number one comment that the, that people using the food pantry had was they wanted access to more fresh food. And I think Food Bank of the Rockies has really done a good job trying to bring more fresh food. Well, one of the cuts that's happening with the Big Beautiful Bill is they have lost that program. So they are now having to cut the produce that they can provide to food pantries. So with that, we are trying to partner with the Hub. And in this last year, we were able to provide small subsidies to all the food pantries, the senior meal programs. That includes Your Ray and Telluride to purchase from the Fresh Food Hub. And in doing that, it's full circle. So we're supporting our ranchers and farmers, because the Hub is getting fresh food and meat from local sources. And then being able to distribute that to the food pantries. Whereas normally, that fresh food is very expensive and households can't always afford it. So that is an area we're really trying to be, to increase, because we know that they'll be getting less fresh produce from the Food Bank of the Rockies. Anything else I can?
That was a question I had for Linaya. You mentioned that the Food Bank of the Rockies is kind of ready to go and gear up. Is that with free food or is that just sort of capacity to expand their current program?
Yeah, that's with distribution to our rural frontier and metro counties. They're, they're ready for extra, to be delivering extra as needed, the capacity.
Let's see. So April, can you tell us a little bit more about your additional food security initiative? Is that, is that the two grants that you've applied for? Or is there something more to it than that?
Yeah, we've, we have to apply for this funding every year, but we've been successful in the past. We don't know about this year. And bringing funding in that then we distribute to the food hub, the three pantries, and then to the two senior meal programs. With also, with an emphasis on making sure that they all have subsidies to be able to buy extra produce from the Fresh Food Hub. So that's just one way we've been trying to support, in addition to annual grants. And then this year, we're also And then this year, we're also trying to make an extra push with our donors. I think one thing that the county can do and that we can all do and we need to think about that is how we amplify the message. And just let our, you know, we have very generous people in this community and um, just letting people know that a gift of money or a gift of time to our local food pantries um, is especially important right now.
I hear you. And that, I guess that was gonna be my question is, obviously it's cash. They want not necessarily cans of food as Linnea said, their purchasing power is so much greater than individuals. Um, but would would we suggest that they donations be made directly to Angel Baskets and to the Fresh Foundation? Is that the two organizations?
Uh, yes, or Weston Family Link um, and and Nukla Naterita. Or URA Food Pantry, um, all of them.
Okay, okay.
But I guess for San Miguel County, yeah, you that you have two in your county.
Okay. April, could you um, send, I guess, me um, information about how people would give to those four organizations?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Then we can start figuring out how to, how to get that word out. That would be really helpful. Um, and my other question is, you said Tri County put out an email of to service providers with resources. What resources did they link to?
Yeah, so they, I I went through it. They linked to all the food pantries, um, senior meals, um, they they linked to us for SNAP, which is not going to be um, applicable right now, but but it was kind of just a broad link for food security um, and and directing people to different websites. Uh, some of the other information I heard this morning specific to like our um, fixed income seniors was, you know, getting in touch with our our office on aging, which is Region Ten. So I think through Tri County and through Region Ten, I will, I will reach out to both of them just to, hopefully they can also increase their messaging. Um, a- and and try to work towards specifically for those, for those fixed income seniors. Um, making sure they have, have the security they need, whether that's through home delivered meals or the senior lunches that are provided in in each community. Yeah, so in specifically in URA, there's home delivered meals and then there's some national level home delivered meals that come through funding with Region Ten for our seniors.
They come into San Miguel County? Um, that would be interesting to have that information too, and then we could share that at those senior lunches.
Yeah, it's it's very limited funding and and very specific um, qualifications for that, but I will, I will provide that to you, Commissioner.
I think it would make sense to reach out to the municipalities as well and just give them this direct information so they could share on their websites and um, spread the message.
That's a great idea.
And just understand how, what the plan of action is here. That's a great idea. Home delivery, um. All right. Um. Anything else?
Um, yeah, one question, Linnea, you mentioned that the biggest need that the food banks had relayed to you was for money. And I think that I did the math right and that at an average of three hundred bucks a month and a hundred and seventy people, that's um, six grand roughly a month, Jared, question mark? Fifty, yeah, and I'm rounding up.
Fifty-one thousand?
Hundred.
One seven, hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you say that more clearly, please? One hundred and seventy thousand?
One hundred and seventy.
People, yeah.
Average three.
Three hundred.
Dollars.
Fifty-one grand.
Thousand dollars of benefits coming to the county in one.
Yes, thank you. I did the math all wrong.
I think you said that three hundred dollar benefit was.
It's at its average. No, it's an average, it's a state average.
Five hundred and twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah.
So knowing that we're trying to fundraise for fifty, sixty grand, um, when do we learn if we've achieved that goal or if we're going to be short? And if we're short, April, do we talk at, you know, ten in the morning and try to scramble to get that money together to get the food that we need to feed our people? Um, same day or do we try to be proactive and begin to look at our budgets and our coffers now in preparation for a shortfall, potential shortfall of funding?
I, oh, good.
Oh, well, I, I was just going to speak to you that the food pantries definitely need to plan ahead of time, right? They're placing their food orders well ahead of time, so.
That's what I'm trying to back out into is.
Yeah.
When will we need to know that we haven't got enough money in order to have time to place an order and find the money?
Right. Um, I will say that fifty-one thousand is a retail dollar spent, right? It's people going to a grocery store and because our food pantries are buying at a discount, their cost won't go up that, that much. It'll still go up significantly.
Good point.
You know what? Maybe what we could do, I don't, well, I don't think we could do it here. We always ask Jared to do real time that, but if we had a sense of how much more each of the food pantries would need to serve those, the additional population that we are concerned might come to them, that would be the number that we could potentially target. That would be, and I'm a thing to come up with. Does that make sense? Um, if we, so if we can tell them, you know, we have a hundred and seventy people in the county, just if we, if we can do by zip code where they are, right, that work? Um, then we could alert those counties, like this is how many households roughly in your region. How much money do you think you would need to spend to to potentially serve that additional population? And then that would give the community a target monthly number.
And and the the state is working on some of those numbers. Um.
State.
The state of Colorado is working some of those local numbers for us on the back end through the, through the um, through our system to try to piece out zip code wise. There there, they are working on that. There's been some asks around that, um, kind of in response to Commissioner Ring. Um, this morning I learned that there there could be a potential kind of in that shortfall um, of utilizing some TANF funding. Now we have other strains on our TANF funding already here in San Miguel.
Linnea, this must be one of the creative ideas.
This is one of those creative ideas, yes. Um, so TANF funding can be utilized for families that our household is making seventy-five thousand dollars or less in this special category when we look at granting money. Um, so we've done it in the past to like Strong Start and we've done it in the past to some of our other um, daycare facilities. That's how we've utilized some of that TANF in the past. I was told this morning from the director of um, we call it DUES, so that's who runs our TANF. Um, I I, we were, we were instructed this morning that that has been also unapproved. Giving money to food pantries through that has also been an approved by the state piece. However, we would need to understand what they are thinking their, their families that are seventy-five thousand dollars and under um, or their households, like kind of a a general guesstimate because we need to be able to show that we're serving that level of of families and TANF is specific for families and not individuals. Um, and so, so that is one kind of coffer that that there is some creative, TANF's very flexible spending um, that that we could in that like shortfall, look at, look at polling, we we still have a reserve. I I do caution the use of TANF for San Miguel County just because we have another issue with our childcare that that could and most likely will dip into TANF. So I, so it's it's kind of a double edged sword there, but do we look at the immediate versus the long term um, when we're using TANF? But that is something that we could, we could talk about if we had a shortfall in in funding to to try and bolster if needed.
Thank you. That's great to know that there's a possible TANF bucket, um, even though it does have some pitfalls. April, I hope that what you heard from this last five minutes of conversation was that um, we are contemplating standing behind your philanthropic fundraising to back you up. And we hope that you're able to find donors through the Telluride Foundation that are able to to fill the gap until the government reopens, but that we're not expecting that's going to be uh, guaranteed. So I think what Linnea has given us is one funding option, which I'm a little lukewarm on, but we're not, uh, we spoke about this concept months ago as commissioners and accepted that with the new federal administration that we were going to be asked to fund more for our citizens. And I think we all made a philosophical commitment at that point that we would. And we didn't know where the asks would be coming from or what exactly they would be, but um, that day is now upon us again and I think we want to keep our promise. So by hook or by crook, Linnea, we're going to find the money to keep our people fed. And, Belina, it sounds like it would be really beneficial to learn if there is any potential of expanded hours, even if it's on the same Sunday, which seems most logical and possible. Um, perhaps if there are going to be more folks lining up for food, we just had five hours instead of three and a few more sets of hands, it might balance out. Everyone works a little harder double time, but it still gets delivered within the window that the school needs. Um, perhaps Wolf needs more hands, perhaps his building is not big enough to really accept more hands and they just do what they can do with the people that are already committed. At any rate, I think that we can also work on finding hands, whether it's um, volunteering throughout the the county staff or whether it's hustling um, friends and neighbors on the street. So that also is a part of the puzzle that I think we can take on if we need to and we'll know more shortly. Um, the other part that I heard you say, Linnea, is the um, getting the word out and all the areas that you listed, starting with the banners on the websites and going to the short letters and the emails and the text messages. Um, as soon as this meeting is over, if we need to authorize you to do that, I think we should decide if we'd like to. I personally would. And I think that the fewer folks that have to come in person and ask your staff um, direct questions, if we can get that word out.
Yeah, and the state has done a lot of that and I I would just like to locally also provide that.
Right. And I think that it might be worthwhile for us to get the word out in the papers and on CODO and really try to.
I have a request from CODO. I've I've held off on responding to that request until after this conversation.
Megan, are you um, tuning in here to this? Awesome, great. Um, so banner on the website, um, notices in our office. We talked about newspaper and CODO. Um, I guess, social media, you guys can kind of get into the details. Do you think that the text messages and the emails that went out, those from the state, do you think or and or is it possible for us to also send one out? Because that could include the local resources.
Yeah, not possible. Those were mass pushed by people who opted in to receiving emails and text messages. Um.
We don't have that button to.
And we don't have that that button. Um, a- and then the speed letters that went out through CBMS were with, in that same kind of manner pushed out through CBMS. Um.
So so in the other channels that we discussed that we can get out information about those resources?
Absolutely.
And then circling back to um, communication with the food banks. I mean, I like your idea of having one meeting with every, whether it's a remote a Zoom meeting, but I I think it would be worthwhile once we get those numbers crunched, to to have, whether that is with Linnea or or I, not certain what the best course of action would be, who who needs to be in the room, but I think having a normalized meeting just talking about the plan of action, what support will be coming in.
Right.
Um, and how that will get scheduled. What do you think, Linnea? Do you think that's a, something you would be um, in a position to do or would it, and or would it be helpful to have a commissioner involved?
I think I'm open to either or, depending on everybody's time. Um, I'm happy to be a part of any conversation um, as we are, we are definitely like touching those, those different clients um, through communication um, both in person and through phone calls that we're, I'm very sure we're going to be getting.
Um, I I like the idea of the commissioners going to, you know, reaching out. You're already so connected to the Fresh Foundation. I have previous relationships with some of the board members and the director, I don't know Wolf, but um, other people in the food banks. I'd be happy to be our liaison to the Telluride Food Pantry. Um, and I think also for us to go to them and say, how can we help? You know, we have some ideas already, but um, I think they'll, they're the ones who are going to have to run this expanded operation. They'll have a better idea. Um, I have a question about additional funding, Linnea. I know that the county has a kind of um, a small slush fund of the insurance department does that people can use on an emergency basis. Can you remind me how much that is a year and what, if you happen to know where it stands?
Yeah, so that that is, it's called general assistance. Um, we utilize that fund specifically for um, sometimes it's for utilities, um, sometimes it's for, sometimes it has been for like food gift cards for people who maybe have lost or are unhoused or and don't qualify for SNAP um, or haven't or don't have a chance to do that. Um, we, we will use it for bus tickets to help people get to and from Montrose. Um, I'm not sure exactly where it is standing as of today, but we typically have about nine thousand dollars in that fund a year. We never spend it all, but we do, we do like to have that available for those walking clients in an immediate need. They also have to meet some financial standard um, and fill, well, no, that's wrong. They have to fill out an application and and show the need. Um, and it's a last resort. So when when we have people come in and say, I need help with food, our first resort is to call the food pantry here and get them an emergency bag of food. So s- so it is kind of that last resort kind of funding.
Yes, I did understand from our past conversations about this fund is that we sell them use and all, and I'm wondering if as kind of an initial show of goodwill and support that we might be able to allocate some of that fund if there are any unused to our local food pantries like immediately.
Yeah.
It'll make a huge difference, but um.
Did you say the total was nine thousand?
It's around nine thousand dollars a year. Mm-hmm.
I don't think it's going to make a huge difference.
No, but well, I I mean, then there's the other question of do we want to just immediately make some kind of a, of a decision about a contribution to food pantries?
Let's include April in that question. April, do you happen to have any um, money yet donated towards the food security cause on your end?
For twenty twenty-six, um, our grants, we haven't, haven't been determined yet, so we'll know um, at the end of the year. We're, we hope to hear on these two grants for the end of the year. So I will say for twenty twenty-six, I don't know um, anything and we'll know by the, you know, hopefully here in the next few months.
I I'm hoping that the government's reopened by twenty twenty-six. I'm thinking immediate term.
Right.
I know that you have kind of similar to Linnea with the General Assistance Fund on our end, you have a Good Neighbor Fund. Is there any immediate money that you could scratch together that we could match, that we could parlay together and donate quickly to our food banks and just give them a little fiscal bump uh, for the next cycle of donations?
Cause I think. Yeah. And I, and Anne, I had told you that we were, we were submit, um, sending out a, an additional one thousand two hundred and fifty um, to the food pantries and the at least, at least three of the food pantries. And I didn't realize we had already sent that out. It went out earlier this year, so um, I don't have anything at the ready, um, but I would be really interested. And um, if we could, once you figure out the gap at each food pantry, like what they, what they need to cover in terms of the SNAP benefits, um, like what that equivalent would be at the average of three hundred a month, that would be um, really good information as we go to our donors and try to get some money coming in end of the year.
Well, let's make a educated guess that it's around fifty grand, knowing that the retail price for food is much higher than the food pantry price. But if we wanted to aim high and we wanted to set ourselves up for the month of November, um, somewhere between, I don't know what the discount is, but I'm going to say between thirty and fifty thousand dollars would be plenty.
I think, I mean, I think for one month, guessing twenty-five would be sufficient. I think those food costs are well below retail. Am I right?
Yeah, I was giving a figure, I was giving a figure of like a thousand dollars would. Yeah, I was giving a figure, I was giving a figure of like a thousand dollars would buy way more than you actually think.
Yeah.
It was like, that was, that was kind of the conversation I had was, but they also.
Revising my guesstimate to twenty five based on no other information than food's cheaper for the food bank. So let's go for it. Um, so that's, that's a target for your philanthropic donors to meet.
Yeah.
We got your, your back if we need to.
And I'd love to know the breakdown between Norwood and Telluride.
So would we.
Yeah, let's do that. I, well, Linnea, that's obviously the first order of business. So I think what I'm hearing from Lance is that, and Kalina, I know how you feel, do you, do you wanna try to use the what's left of, you know, we're we're in um, almost in November, some of the funds, a few thousand or something from the, sorry, general assistance fund, or you wanna just wait to see what the need is?
I don't think that, let's start with the food banks and if a grand tomorrow is gonna make or break the initial part of November, then yeah, let's do that. But otherwise, let's just save our strength until we know.
And that general assistance fund is county only money. It is, it is something that you guys can direct me how how you would like us to utilize that.
Two grand in there now. Um, so maybe that's another quite number you could give.
I can definitely get you that number.
The balance.
That would be great.
Okay. Yes, April.
And one more thing, I, Lance, you brought up a great point. I do wanna remind everybody of the good neighbor fund. We do have funds in that right now and it can be used for food. So anyone that feels like they need an extra bump for their family, this is a great time to apply.
That's wonderful.
And that's on the Tri County Health Network website, the application form.
Thank you, April.
That would be great to include in the information sent out.
Yeah, um, yeah, to just.
And I'll also.
Know that resource is available.
Yeah, and we a- as like the directors are are communicating back and forth this morning and and through today, like about different ideas that they're coming up while talking to their commissioners. Um, I will also speak with our collaborative management program and any of the families that they serve that may be SNAP recipients that we can, we can talk to them about some supportive payments through collaborative management as well, could be a, could be another place. Yeah.
Okay, um, Linnea, why don't, if, could you also forward me please that Tri County email?
Yes.
Okay, um, cause I'm just thinking, um, I think I have a commissioner's column coming up and this could be a a a good topic for it. Um, uh, yeah.
When, when is that due, Megan? Do you know? The commissioners, Commissioner Brown's commissioner column, and it's destined to run. Great, because if we think. If the timing is soon.
It is soon, it is soon.
Like within the week?
I believe it's the first Wednesday of the month.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And I think people would be happy to hear about something other than the other intentions. Um, yeah, let's do, I'll plan to do that.
That's great.
So you and I can coordinate as you pull together all the information that we have from the Tri County email and others that we brainstorm here, but that's great. Um, and I definitely like the idea of connecting with the municipalities. Um, I think maybe that would be after we meet with the two food pantries to get a sense of their need, if that makes sense. And then once I have pulled together that information and then ask them, as you guys said, to amplify it. And also potentially if we feel that we need to make a contribution, ask them to do something similar. They they love it when we partner, so, and we do, oh, hello. Okay, do you have a game plan? Um, Linnea, you have a bunch of things you're gonna remind to us and then um I think I'm gonna try to make an appointment and we'll coordinate with the Tyre right food pantry for next week. Um, and and he would do the same with Linnea for the Fresh Foundation.
Yeah, yeah, sounds great.
We'll share what information we have and talk about what we could be.
I think that's wonderful.
April, anything you think we've missed?
I don't think so. I really, it's great partnering with you to think about how we can fill this gap, so thank you.
Thank you, April, and thanks for, you know, the food initiatives you have underway as well as dedicating that call rather gives um, money. When is that date? I could conclude that in my column, or could you just send me that?
I'm gonna send that, I'm gonna send you a whole way, uh, different ways to donate, so.
Perfect.
Oh, I'll send that.
Okay, you're the best, okay.
Thank you, April.
Yeah.
All right.
You do. Alrighty, I think we have our that um underway. Linnea, thank you so much. Sorry, we have made a lot of asks for information and so.
I will try to gather what I can, make sure I can get as as close to information as possible. Um, and as information continues to develop, I mean, it is an hour by hour email of ideas and thoughts and things that are changing um in this conversation.
Week, update us again.
I'm happy to.
That be useful to you all? By then we probably have some numbers, or should we wait till afternoon of the food pantry meetings?
It would be optimal to have the food pantry meetings first, because then I think we'd be able to really uh, be precise.
Yep.
And if we can do that in the first two days of the week, incredible. Why don't we put Linnea o- on the agenda for the fifth, as a placeholder?
And I believe I am going to be on the agenda for the fifth for my regular updates.
We're coming together.
And so we'll just.
We'll include it in.
Combine it all together.
Right, and if we don't have the information to speak intelligently, we can talk about other things.
Sounds great.
I I have a Fresh Foundation board meeting on Monday night, so.
Perfect.
Agenda is this.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm already.
You're in the mix.
Yeah, so I'll certainly have that info.
That sounds great, sure.
Wednesday. Um, and just to clarify, I'm reaching out asking about how many clients are currently being served on a weekly basis at the food pantry. Um, I'm gonna ask about their wholesale cost analysis.
Yeah, that would be great.
Or just like, how much can X amount of money, how far can that go?
Oh, that was great.
Yeah, those were numbers that were not openly given to to me when I spoke with either food pantry, I think and at the state level, like they're like, it's just tire buying power. Um, so we weren't, we didn't get exact numbers.
They actually go per household number.
Yeah, I think you'll be able to hone in on that. And um, and then of course, just what is the capacity for expanded service hours and perhaps what the volunteers ask with the week. Yeah, um, I also just wanted to note in case listened by the public or covered by media, and also this is something that could share in the column, um, is that community service hours absolutely be, absolutely be utilized at the local food pantry. So it's a great way to um vol- volunteer your time um and knock out those community service hours.
Great, and that's for people with um criminal issues and or misdemeanor issues and high school kids and things like that.
Yeah, just folks that need to break off those hours for.
I, uh, when you speak of that, I also wonder if that could be utilized when we look at our able-bodied worker requirements that are starting November one as well. So, so maybe that's something that I can get with Fresh Foundation and you and and see if that's something that we could refer out if we need be.
And I'll just give a little plug that that I do believe that the senior lunches do tie into this need and may see an influx. Um, so the senior lunch services, um, that is also, uh, there's always need for volunteers for the senior lunches and they can also utilize for community service hours.
Right, and.
The um Norwood service is on um Thursdays and Saturdays.
The Norwood.
Norwood, senior lunch services. Uh, yeah.
Okay, whatever.
Tight.
Yeah, you know what, and let's do this, Kalina, also while we're thinking about our relative communities, I can um we can pull together that resource list and share it through with the senior lunch um, team, which is run by Fresh Foundation over there and I know how to reach people down here.
I also, I also will get with Melinda Evans, who's the director in Dolores County, um, to discuss our Egnor community. Um, and and those people who go utilize the senior center out there and then any families and and see what their next plan is. I know it's not a huge community, but they do, all their services come out of Dove Creek and and human services in Dove Creek is very um collaborative with us, so um I will, I will reach out to her as well.
Thank you. That occurred to me actually that we would have Egnor residents.
Yes.
In SNAP, and so we might need to alert the Dolores County uh food pantry.
And I'm sure Melinda has been in contact with their food pantry, who's the director of human services out there. Um, and and probably in close contact with them, but I will see what she, if she sees an influx from our Egnor community and what that looks like and to just let me know, so that I can report that back to us.
Great, and we could, of that one seventy, I imagine Tom will be um at the far west end.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I think we need to move on. Um, we will see you next week at those food pantry meetings. What days are you up here again? Although we can do it on morning.
Um, I'm here Tuesdays and Fridays.
Okay.
But I can be here any day. Just so you know.
I'm, alright.
Thank you, Linnea.
Thank you very much.
Uh, alrighty, we are moving on now to item six B, which is discussion of the Norwood food pantry loc- relocation, and Kalina has an update for us on that.
Yeah, thanks. So um, it's a- as was mentioned in um by Jerry that I mean last week I would, uh, Jared met with the Samuel Basin um fair board to discuss the potentiality of relocating the Norwood food pantry in the Fairgrounds Arena. Um, and there are some concerns among the the fair board about that mixed use. Um, I had uh some further follow-up conversations uh with individuals, just getting some more information about what those conflicts might look like and how they potentially alleviate them. Um, one of the biggest concerns that I'm hearing arise is really lack of space during the fair week, um specifically for the small animal. Uh, where the small animals are housed during the week and where we're discussing building out for the food pantry in the arena does overlap and encroach on that need. Um, I had a discussion with Jake Gordon, who's on the, um, but just as a, and a citizen conversation, not on behalf of the fair board, but he just wanted to talk to me as as a resident, um, and just his experience through the years. And he has concerns that that's really gonna encroach on the operations of the fair. Um, so so I just wanted to kind of pass that on, that that's something that we're mulling over and how to navigate that potential challenge. Um, and if, in the meantime, um Stephanie Levy from Fresh Foundation has been exploring all other potential options. I did sit, sit down with Ryan Rigetti and top it up with potentiality of utilizing the Norwood um Roden Bridge shop. Uh, there's many challenges that are gonna come with that location mostly that there's, as far as it being utilized for a public space, there, there's real parking challenges. And um that it's it would be a s- a challenge for clients for just the the amount of residents, their clients that are coming and utilizing the food pantry during distribution hours, so there can be up to fifty cars at a time. Um, so it might be really
Yeah.
A stretch there. Um, and I initially, one of the concerns was it's just so far from public transportation courts that there's, if a lot of the clients are gonna have a hard time accessing a location like that so far out of the town center.
I have a question. Aren't we using the Roden Bridge shop for Roden Bridge purposes?
Yes.
So how, why, I mean, is there half the shop sitting empty or?
There's a small portion that is utilized by search and rescue store. If there's a gear store in there and equipment that could potentially be um like stored elsewhere. It, it doesn't seem very viable, basically. That was one of the suggestions given at the fair board meeting. That's why I pursued it to just really get to the bottom of what that would look like. Because it is a county property and we're just trying to right, exhaust all our resources and figure out if there's some um alternative county property that would be appropriate um, in in the Norwood area. But it really, I, there's, there's also issues with electricity needs um as well. I, it just, it seems like the build out and the service to the public would be a very challenging.
Yeah.
Um, and.
Not to mention all the big equipment coming and going.
Yeah, there's, it's, yeah, it wouldn't necessarily be a a safe public space also.
Let's don't say we didn't.
Yeah, but did explore it, just to be sure.
Thanks for following up.
I, we're going to continue the RFP process for the arena um, so that we can wrap our heads around what bids are gonna look like, what this would cost. And like I mentioned, in the, in the meantime, Stephanie has been putting all the feelers out to just make sure any and all other option are being looked at and and exhausted. Janet Cask has been looking into the potentiality and thoughts of what mobile units would be. Um, Fresh Foundation already went down that path and got a global upwards of a hundred thousand dollars for a mobile unit that was adequate. Um, but Janet Cask has some connections with a manufacturer that has built the Fairgrounds concession. Um, so far, her estimates are looking similar um, in in price. Um, but she still, uh, was looking at one other source, um, the least expensive option that she found was seventy thousand dollars for like a single wide mobile unit that has like, is a so there's bedrooms in it, it would be a lot of work um to make it functional as a food pantry.
Is there any advantage to having a food pantry on wheels? I can't think of one.
Well, there could be an advantage in that it is on wheels, actually. So if the Fresh Foundation ultimately found a forever home, which is that organization's goal ultimately is to find a place where they can operate their organization out of for all of the services um and programming that that they offer, um, potentially a mobile unit that is serving as the Norwood Food Pantry could land there. So that has been discussed. Um, you know, the Glockson property, there's an open lot there. So that was one of the preliminary um options that we were exploring is putting a mobile unit on that open lot. For, and that would be at least a five-year plan until potential um renovations and building happened for the Glockson building. Um, so I mean, it's more long-term than what the food pantry had in place at the school, which was a three-year lease, which then was cut short. Um, and I still, uh, Stephanie and the Fresh Foundation board are still very open to a mobile option. I mean, ultimately, after all the feedback came from the fair board, um, you know, they have concerns about just having a um a positive relationship with that mixed use at the fairgrounds and, you know, it's, it's a community service and they're very um mindful of wanting to have a as a a positive relationship with with the arena users and um the fair board ultimately. Um, so they're, you know, trying to find out, figure out solutions here that are gonna be applicable for all. Um, but uh, nothing else has really arisen that is a wonderful shining option. There was one private um property, commercial property in the town of Norwood, um, but that is not currently available.
Is that the warehouse?
That was Danny, Danny's warehouse, yeah. Um, but yeah, he's currently not, it's not available right now. I am going to reach out again to the town of Telluride for the Spidore building, because there's some feedback I've been given that potentially there might be space there. Um, but the original message that came from the town of Telluride is all of that space is currently being utilized.
What's the Spider building?
So it's, the town of Telluride owns it. It's where they store all of their um, like public works vehicles that are in utilized in the town and parks and rec. I believe you say it's just an extra storage base for the town of Telluride. Um, and it was a uh wood shop in the veil. Uh, it's a very large building. Um, so I am. Um, so I am gonna reach out to Zoe Dunall, I just got this information this afternoon, actually, and just. Update her on the that this problem is not, the issue hasn't been solved yet and it. They can potentially revisit um the request, as it might. Could be a good site, but they initially said there wasn't, they didn't have room to accommodate the food pantry there. Um, other than that, there's been no other leads, um, and Stephanie was able to provide. Uh, a site analysis, an initial um schematic drawing to. So that there's guidance on.
Hmm.
Developing an RFP. Um, that just came through yesterday afternoon.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. Oh, I guess finally, um, when I met with with Fresh Foundation um and Food Pantry. They discussed potentially going back in front of the school board to ask once again. There they could reconsider extending the lease, um. They did not feel very comfortable, well, they just have made no. Um. Movement there at all and they suggested to me that perhaps if. A representative from the county property me, um, go in front of the school board um. On behalf of the Norwood Food Pantry, um, just explaining that we're. Doing everything we can to try to figure out a solution, but it might take a little more time than what is. Their kind, that time crunch they're looking at for moving out by the end of the year and asking for an extension, um. I would be absolutely willing to do that, um, but I do think that there it's gonna. There would need to be a solution in the works so that they could understand that there it there will be a home for the food pantry. Ultimately, um, if we're a- asking for some sort of an extension, um, so. Hopefully land on a solid solution here and if more time is needed, um, I'm willing to go in front of the school board. Um, perhaps with uh Stephanie Greenby and just ask for an extension.
I have a question, having visited the arena and and seen the two options that they discussed in terms of where the pantry could potentially fit. And understanding, you know, the the impact on the small animal pens during fair week. Um, there, what I really liked about that space is that there aren't a lot of people there all the time, right? As there are on other other facilities and also that, I'm trying to get myself oriented, I think it's the north side of the building. There's a ton of parking, right, and you can enter in from that north side. What do you think it would cost to build like a annex? To the fairgrounds that would utilize the our real estate and. You know, some of the facilities, but not the ones that have other uses, does anybody, I mean. How much, it's probably a lot more than building out something inside.
Definitely and probably more than a hundred grand for a mobile unit.
Yeah, I mean, and that's where this conversation around a mobile unit, that's kind of evolved, because generally. Um, some sort of a modular.
Yeah.
It is gonna be more affordable and easy to transport and also, we've been just looking at. Like this really condensed timeline of trying to. Solution, um, so a rebuild, it's just that.
Yeah.
Rebuilding can be delivered and.
Right.
Can then move if it, if its use is not.
Right. Necessary.
Necessary within, sure, yeah. Um, but yes, I mean, I think that that would be great, the issue really being the timeline and maybe. And ti- and money, time and money are the big challenges here.
I think that's low on my list of priorities to explore, Commissioner Brown, it's an interesting idea, but based on. The pressing time and the knowledge that our budget isn't. As flush as it has been in years past, I don't foresee that getting a lot of traction.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I I love the creative thinking.
Yeah.
I was, I was gonna suggest it, I think another option and one that did present itself at the airboard meeting was. If this space is used, constructing, you know, as more applicable, like some pole bor-. Pole barns for small animals.
Yeah.
That space might be a better solution than trying to fit the food bank into another.
I was thinking the same thing, but my concern was with the small animals, don't they need like heating and things like sort of similar facility? Or what, what we're gonna do with the pole barn?
Do that in the summer, that's, again, that's really when it is utilized in the most part of the league.
So that's a more elegant solution, yeah.
So some kind of a temporary space that would be erected for specifically for the small animals that would be adjacent to the arena.
And and that was kind of, as as we in, I engaged in that conversation with the. Fair Board, you know, that was kind of the other side of the coin that they started to discuss that. If this were to happen, maybe they would need more facilities and I said, sounds great. I could love facilities master planning for the fairgrounds, if if you've got those big ideas, I I think we'd be willing. We have a time crunch now, right, and so.
Well, so do you think a temporary pens for the small animals is a possibility? I have no idea.
I, I think we have a lot more time to think about that solution than about, yeah.
Yeah.
Anecdote, a- anecdotally, I did learn that the Pink Palace was built because there. Was a barn where the bus um stop is now and that barn was torn down for the bus. Services and parking, um, and then so the Pink Palace was built, but that barn was a lot bigger than the Pink Palace is. And so they actually lost space for the fair for that purpose or or. Housing animals, so that I think the fair board is kind of like working off that historic knowledge feels like. Their space has been encroached.
Sure.
And and this would do so again, so.
Understood.
I I think that I I li- I like that creative thought about if. The arena is the solution that is that we land on, um, figuring out something. That will suffice for fair and and support those needs um. To house the monies and the chickens.
And should we um. Go ahead with this improvement within the arena for the food pantry, could it be something built that's. I mean, could our objective be to make it temporary, recognizing the Fresh Foundation down the road wants to have a different facility? Or would that be too big a promise? You know, even like five years temporary ever.
I mean, that's a a real question as I, that was our original discussion was like how to build this. In a temporary way.
Yeah.
You know, that is A, maybe less expensive to construct and B, can, you know. Assure the arena users that this isn't a forever land, that it is more of a temporary solution. Um, until a a better long-term um solution it's is landed on um. But when you're talk, I I'm no, I'm no carpenter, but when you're talking like building something that's actually gonna be sufficient.
Right.
If you're framing it, you're framing it.
It's, it's, it's pretty like realistically, it's fairly permanent.
Yeah, um, but I guess.
Structured properly.
Okay, but but eh, but so the construction I understand is one thing, but also just our sort of the. The mindset that we go into it.
No.
I mean, I guess it doesn't matter because it temporarily it's not gonna be months, it temporarily is gonna be years no matter what.
Yeah, I mean, I I think to find a really viable solution here is is realistic, hopefully not years, um. Also, you know, a point brought up is if the Norwood School Bond passes and the current school is then. Um, it comes under the ownership of the town of Norwood, um, that there very well may be a lot of. Obstinate space for um community uses like the food pantry. Um, but I think the concept of having to move out, move back in two or three years later is daunting also, though not um approachable. Uh, yeah.
Okay, is there anything that you need from us right now other than to receive this update?
Um, no, I just, I just wanted to update um you all and have, give a public update on this. Um, I know I think there's a lot of c- community members that want, that are tuned in on this issue. And I've certainly heard from a lot of residents, um, there is a concern about. The county temporarily funding this, um, and. Putting a whole bunch of money into this facility that will be used for just a temporary amount of time, um, I've heard that as well. Staying. Um, but as you know, the earlier conversation that we had, the need is just increasing and and. The local food pantries are bracing themselves for a continual in- increase in need in the coming. Months and years, um, and so I think that, you know, we all understand the importance of this and. I, we need to do what we can to make sure that these services aren't, don't have um any gaps. And that that they're supportive.
One more question, maybe this would be for Janet, if she's the trailer researcher, is is there resale value? On used mobile food pantries or trailers? Um, it seems like what we're gonna end up with is an RFP for remodel. Plus an RFP for some kind of animal s- structure. And when we combine those two numbers, we'll end up wanting to compare that to the mobile option.
Hmm.
And with the mobile option, there may be a final number, which is how quickly does that depreciate? So.
That's a great question.
Given all those inputs, we should be able to do a decision based on math. But also based on um the best plan for the most number of people and the highest need. And I'd like to think that we'll be able to come to that as soon as we have the right inputs.
Great, I I'll follow up that um with Janet and.
And if we just need to say it's a hundred grand and there's a percentage lost every year, that's fine too, it doesn't have to be.
Right.
Precise, but a sense of what the market does there.
Yeah, I mean, I have been holding on to this concept of a mobile unit because there just wouldn't be conflict with the.
Yeah, and then we, then we put a price tag on peace and decide if it's worth it, that's fine.
Yes, for all parties involved, um, and eh, the food pantry would then have the like. Ability to operate even in other days of the week, if they if they wouldn't, they would have a tonny, um.
Yeah, there's, there's benefit.
Real value in that, especially with the increased need.
Yeah, agreed, so willing to explore that even though the price tag upfront may be higher.
That's a really good point, Lance, the fact that we may have to sink in tens of thousands upfront, but we will be forever. Yeah, it's a really good point.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anything else on that?
Kalina, thanks as.
Hmm.
Always for continuing to to push forward on this, it's. Um, an unexpected but really important task that you've undertaken and I appreciate you being the direct link.
Thank you, and I'll just send that gratitude right forward to all the people working on this. And um, Fresh Foundation, I mean, I, it's worth stating publicly that the food pantry was taken on. By the Fresh Foundation just a year ago and it's been, uh, you know, an ongoing challenge. Find a solid home for the food pantry, but there's a lot of just wanna see the community served, so.
I include you in that number.
Thank you.
All right, we'll wait for your um and Jared's numbers and Jared, if you could also maybe. Check in with Janet as you're gathering RFP numbers and let her know the timing of that RFP. So that she understands when she needs to have a kind of final trailer number, so we can compare apples and apples quickly.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, and just to be clear, the the whatever we did for the small animals would be sort of a temporary structure for that week or two, it wouldn't be. We're not talking about uh constructing more space, right, because if we're gonna construct more space, might as well construct for the food pantry.
I I I think that that is a big option on the table, yes. Would we do that as a temporary basis, would we expand it from the space thing that already been hinged previously? Based on other construction efforts?
Yeah.
But the difference between constructing even a permanent animal shelter versus constructing interior space. For food service is different price per square foot.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we do end up determining that. The fairgrounds is the best option for the food pantry and that the animals also need a structure, I'd be much more interested in. Creating a long-term structure for those animals, knowing that we're not gonna have. Um, anywhere near the same amount of cost to get that part of the new construction build. As opposed to trying to build a separate wing or separate standalone structure for a full kitchen. With refrigeration, electricity, water. Yeah, up to standard, so.
All right, I think we're good, um, we are, I would take a motion to adjourn, just letting the public know that we are hustling out of here. To make it to a four o'clock um work session at the Posable Schoolhouse, whoever wants to come from the Posable Community. Um, that will be a fairly informal listening session, the reports also from feedback.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
How do you vote? Uh, bye, we are adjourned, thanks everybody for showing up for this um emergency special meeting.
I am abandoning you.
Just clarify, you.
No, I think, I think that like.
It's all taken the classroom so I can still.
Right.
That's more internal.
It's more internal.
Week and a half, uh, as of. Six o'clock tonight, it's like, I'm gonna start whatever. That means. Cause I think that comes to six. Oh, that's fine.
No pressure, we'll be done at six fifteen.
That'll be the pressure of the kitchen.
It's not our.
When your wild children are starting rampaging.
It's not our.
That looks a lot like. Um, so Jared and Michael, we wish Tanner with you or with the.
I mean, you can ride it too.
Oh, you're right, so you're.
Are you driving too?
I'm gonna drive too.
I'll go, I'll go with Jared because I'm.
Sure.
Other, I was gonna drive agents that I saw, but it would be like, um, so people were like, I just, cause I'm like a whole.
That's your.
I just mean that someone wants to come back into town.
Yeah, oh, I see, I see, I see.
I was supposed to.
Well, I'm going to Aliso Row, so um, we could, if we drop one of our cars at Lawson there, do that. Or if you wanted to drop your car at home, I'm happy to grab you, I'm gonna get out.
And this is a, Jennifer, who's.
I, um, maybe they're like, let's not coordinate, though, let's. Yeah, we don't have time to deal with the cars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I sent my.
Okay. Yeah, it's cutting flyer.
Exactly, so yeah, okay, good, and we. I'm also.